We'll call the meeting to order this evening. Let's please stand and say the pledge to the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to announce the mayor, Cal is unable to be with us this evening due to some family conflicts and issues. So I will attempt to keep the meeting going this evening. Uh, next on the uh, agenda here is adoption of the agenda. By the way, I have two items that need to be dropped from that this evening. Uh, under new business B and D. And uh, both those are off the agenda for this evening. Probably show up what next month Connie?
Possibly.
Possibly.
I would estimate that they would.
Okay. Uh, any other changes or additions or subtractions on the minute are they? Agenda?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended, second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Okay, you should have had your minutes from our previous meeting. This was April 5th. This was a Zoom meeting. And please let me know your feelings about any changes that need to be made in the April notes. Okay.
So on my ward report?
Yeah.
I did not attend the meeting. I could go to the meeting, I just called and got the information about it, so the justification.
Okay. Did not attend, but just reported on, okay. Alright, any other items of change?
Gary, I'm sorry, want to back up here on the agenda.
Okay.
We need to to add the fee ordinance for the the uh, this would be, since it's an amendment of an amendment of amendment, I think we would add under old business. I apologize for this folks. Um, trash pickup fee.
Okay, we just talked about that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Trash pickup fee under A.
Add A there and we'll roll through that as quickly as we can when we get to it.
Okay.
If anybody wants to maybe amend that motion to adopt with the change.
I'll make the motion to amend it.
Second.
Second, uh, those in favor of the change?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Sorry about that folks.
That's okay. No problem. Uh, where are we at now on?
Minutes.
Minutes, right?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Okay, motion to adopt minutes as amended, second? Well, I'll second that myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Uh, at this point, we have uh, comments of citizens. Anybody who's a citizen of Tell City would comment. I don't see any at this point. It will go to committee and ward reports. And uh, W R, I guess.
Okay, um, I've got several things to report on and I'll end it with the partners in pride. Um, I had a meeting with uh, our attorney, Mr. Haggardon. And um, I guess, I think it was around April the 13th. We discussed the um, possible changes to the electric board ordinance. And um, we're still pursuing that. We haven't finalized the document yet, have we Jeff?
I completed something today that I'm going to review again and then circulate before we bring it to before the public.
So hopefully we'll have that at the June meeting. I.
A couple different.
Pardon me?
You had a couple different things on there.
Yes, yes, okay. Um. I attended on April the 14th, I attended a Zoom uh, training that was put on by the state board of accounts that Connie had invited us to, uh, lasted about an hour. So I think Gary would.
I was there, yeah, very good meeting.
It was talking mainly about the um, uh, American Rescue Program funding that we're getting and certain regulations that guide the expenditure of those funds. Um, on April 19th, I attended a prebid construction conference uh, meeting at JFK Pool regarding the splash pad. I learned earlier this evening at the board of works that we received no bids. That's gonna delay that project unfortunately. It was a very good meeting uh, that we had out there.
Who was there?
Pardon me?
Who was?
Uh, there was a prospective bidder and uh, Janice was there, the mayor was there, um.
Region 15.
Jason Brown, the engineer.
Yeah, the engineer was there. Right, right, Lisa Gauzum was there. Uh, on um, uh, April the 20th, I met with superintendent Dixon at the electric department to discuss the proposed electric board ordinance amendment, just to get his input into that uh, document. April the 21st, I participated in a review committee meeting for selecting the engineering firm uh, to do the pre-engineering work on the uh, Highway 66 sidewalk construction project, which is scheduled to take place in fiscal year 26, I think.
Twenty five, twenty six, yeah.
Twenty twenty six, okay. And on April the 27th, Indiana 15 Regional Planning Commission had their um, quarterly board meeting. I participated by Zoom. So those were some of the things I did during the past month. I do want to announce on the, I have selected a resident for the partner in pro- partner in pride award for the month of May. And it is Mary Jarboe, who lives at 409 15th Street. And um, I met with Mary uh, over the weekend actually. And she is excited about receiving the award. They they take meticulous care of their of their property. So um, I will be delivering the sign either tonight or tomorrow, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
Very busy. We, all I have is uh, there was an LEPC Emergency Plan Commission meeting. Um, they are having their exercise, we have to have one a year that they perform just to see how all the local groups um, take care of whatever, whatever the problem is. This one's going to be a school bus incident. It'll be a hands-on incident for first responders. And then at our next meeting in July, then we'll take that information and we'll discuss it. That's all I have.
Bill?
Uh, no report.
No report. Uh, no report for me, John?
Uh, the only thing I have is I've had several people contact me, run into me about streets and things like that. Wondering when we must get started on the street repairs around town. Kind of filled them in on what the plan is on that, so. Lot of concern there, but they know we're on top of it though, so that's all I have.
Do we have much money for non-bus route routes, non-bus route roads?
I think they've already got a, there's already a mapped out plan for what they're gonna spend this year pretty well already, yeah.
Okay, I might get the mayor then.
Yeah, get the mayor, he's he's got that, yeah.
For a number of years, I'm not sure exactly right now, but what they would do would be Rudolph and the mayor and the street commissioner would go out in town. And again, we could turn in to them roads that we feel like are in serious need. But they would kind of rate them like one, two, or three.
Ah, that's right.
And uh, and just try to get the ones most critically uh, in need of repair along with the ones most traveled.
Well, we got the community crossings grant, but.
Yeah.
Buster kickoff, do we have a? Day, I'm looking at Janice. Do we have a date on when that paving might start, Janice, or?
Um, not an exact date, no. I could say something about community crossings, don't you, because they are not being cared?
I think we need, yes, since you have that, I think we ought to, um, yeah.
I didn't want to be the bearer of bad news, so I'll start with the good news first. We were successful at the end of 2020 getting money. And as you remember in March, we bid those projects and Jay Crowell was the successful bidder. I think they've indicated to Mayor June timeframes. But we're trying to coordinate right now with um, the gas company. As you know, they're all over the city with their lines. And I learned something that I wasn't aware of, the wastewater department is working with the gas company. Because as they're hammering the work, they find issues and the wastewater department gets involved too. So that's kind of put up some stoppers on a few of them. But then we also have the water project that's going to have. The new water lines are gonna do, have postponed some of our streets till later year as well. Like we thought Franklin needed it right away and Sixth Street needed it right away, but we have taken them off the list because of the water project. So what I'm trying to say is this list that was approved and funded, hopefully will start in June, but I can't tell you where they're gonna start because the gas company is looking at our map and we're looking at their map. Ryan Goble with Rudolph said probably June. And Mayor would love to have it all done by August. But if we're delayed because of the gas company, it may not get done.
Well, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go pave a street and then tear it up again.
So we're not pushing Rudolph to start really quick because it's a timing issue. Now, the bad news is um, that NDOT announced the new wave of winners. We did apply to this round. Our strategy this year was to go in both rounds. A community can request a million dollar in a year. We were gonna go in for the first round and the second round for a total of a million. And this is the first time since 2016 that we didn't get funded. So I took it kind of personal. Uh, they didn't fund anything on our list. So you saw the winners and Perry County got a million, which is awesome, and Troy got money.
Troy got money.
We did not. We applied, we had applied for $620,000 actually. And I just want to share with you why we weren't funded, so you don't think that the other word that I've done something incorrect, that um, we had identified Washington Street as a project from 12 to 15. And that crosses a county bridge. And because it crosses a county bridge, they denied it. And they didn't just deny that section, they denied all everything. Because they weren't gonna partially fund any applications with this round.
What we learned a lesson.
Oh, I told him I was really upset because it was a very expensive lesson and had that. I mean, I knew and I think Mayor knew bridges are county maintenance. But I didn't know that paving continuously across was gonna be an issue. So anyway, that's why Tell City was not on the list for more money yet this year. But we will open, I think NDOT has another round in July, which we will apply for and we'll probably go in. Connie will allow us the matching then, we'll try to go in for the four million dollars.
If we can find it, we will, yes.
But what that means is that that round may not get paved this year. That might be awarded this year and paid this year.
So going over any bridges in town would not be, you you just, you can't.
I'm not sure, I have to get with NDOT to find out exactly how we would exempt the bridge, like, you know?
You mean if the bridge crosses Windy Creek?
Yes.
Or Little Windy Creek, right?
Here, I can, I can.
No, that's Windy Creek, they're on the county heads.
That was my explanation.
County responsible for all bridges. On 14th Street. They just.
Yep.
Post the weight limit signs, I believe, on that bridge.
I mean, I knew that they had the maintenance side, but as far as structural and you know, issues, but I didn't realize it was a paving issue. Basically, they just got our entire application from that one bridge. So we're gonna still get the money, which is be delayed six months, hopefully.
So that that means we we what carve carve the bridges out of our our applications in the future?
Yeah.
Get the county to apply for the bridges. Or use some of their new money for bridges.
Yeah, there you go.
If you remember, we had that.
We need a hundred square feet of pavement here, Connie.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I apologize, Mayor felt bad, I felt bad, there's really no arguing with them at this point. They didn't have enough money to fund us, so we didn't get funded.
Money now or money later?
So we can apply for more, did you say we can apply more in the second?
There's two rounds per year Phillip, and we didn't, we weren't successful this time, but we'll we'll try again.
You're you're limited to a million dollars a year.
A year.
We can just apply for a million in the second one and not have it split up.
Really, the only thing that's gonna hurt is the timing. We won't get the second round pay and this year we'll have to wait. Because by the time we get an award in the second round, it's pretty late.
If the bridges don't get paved, we'll just have to duke's hazard down for the.
Thank you, Janice, for that explanation.
Janice, you want this back? Put a sign up.
Bridge closed.
Bridge closed due to county.
Okay, under old business, I think we now need to look at our.
Can we go back just a second?
Yes, we may.
Partners in Pride?
Okay.
Because the mayor has asked me to announce his partner in pride for the month of May.
Okay.
And that is Onyx Private Wealth at 1009 Main Street. He's very impressed with with all of what they've done with their building and they're a longstanding business in our community and very, very glad and thankful that they are here and that they have really improved the looks of their building, yeah, so.
And what's the name of the place?
Onyx Private Wealth.
Oh, Onyx, okay, gotcha.
And then Julie, you will be in June.
Okay.
Okay, Gary, now.
Alright, okay, no problem. Uh, we need to look at our trash pickup fee. I think it was suggested due to increase in costs that we raised that fee from what, five Jeff to six?
Yes, the uh, this is the large item pickup. Um, each uh, each citizen receives a five dollar fee annually um, that funds the hauling away the large trash items, the couches, the approved items. Um, because of the cost of this project, the recommendation uh, was requested of the board of public works. Earlier this evening, the board of public works did uh, make a motion and approve a recommendation that the council uh, increase that five dollar fee to a six dollar fee. That fee has not been changed since June of 2017. So um, quite frankly, it's it's a fee that's that's been coming and and probably needs to be updated. Um, when I received word of this, it was asked, I was requested to draft an amendment to the ordinance, which I have done. Um, it's obviously up to the council to address fees, so that's why it's in front of you. And Board of Public Works made that recommendation tonight. So I do have an ordinance if uh, the the board is inclined to hear it.
I have a question before.
Sure.
How much does a dollar a month generate in additional revenue?
I have that just a minute. Oh, no, I didn't subtract it. Last year at five dollars for, they they send out cards to 3,147 people at five dollars. So we collected 15,735.
Wow, it's thirty.
And this year it's 18,000. If if you increase it to the six dollars, would be 18,882.
Is this a monthly, I that's one.
No, it's not a monthly.
It's just a single fee, annual fee, yeah.
It's just this annual five dollars that's added to your bill in June.
In June, okay.
Yes, it's just a one-time fee.
That's what I thought Larry, I'm sorry, I didn't explain that very well.
Yeah, it's just a one-time fee.
Superintendent.
So would I add 3200 bucks basically?
Superintendent stated what the cost of load was going from 195 to 218 dollars this year. So that's why he asked for that increase.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, we'll need a motion?
A motion to. For the ordinance?
For a first reading, I think.
Motion for first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You've got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, I'm gonna try to buzz through this. Um, this would be ordinance, ordinance number 1176. Um, because I put this in new business, that's okay, we'll we'll take it as 1176. Ordinance number 1176. Ordinance amending ordinance number 662 passed on 4/3/1989. Amended by ordinance number 934 passed on 5/2/2005. Further amended by ordinance number 937 passed on 7/5/2005. Further amended by ordinance number 974 passed on 5/7/2007. Further amended by ordinance number 1009 passed on 5/4/2009. Further amended by ordinance number 1043 passed on 5/2/2011. Further amended by ordinance number 1066 passed on 5/6/2013. Further amended by ordinance number 1123 passed on 6/5/2017, which is found at section 55.09B3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tell City, Indiana. Whereas there currently exists ordinance number 662 passed on 4/3/1989. Amended by ordinance number 934 passed on 5/2/2005. Further amended by ordinance number 937 passed on 7/5/2005. Further amended by ordinance number 974 passed on 5/7/2007. Further amended by ordinance number 1009 passed on 5/4/2009. Further amended by ordinance number 1043 passed on 5/2/2011. Further amended by ordinance number 1066 passed on 5/6/2013. Further amended by ordinance number 1123 passed on 6/5/2017, which is codified at section 55.09B3 of the Code of Ordinances of Tell City, Indiana, which generally provides for a fee for the annual spring cleanup conducted by the city. And whereas is, whereas it has come to the attention of the common council of Tell City, Indiana, that because of rising costs, the aforementioned ordinance should be amended to increase the spring cleanup fee from five dollars for each residential customer billing to six dollars for each residential customer billing. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Tell City, Indiana as follows. Section one, there is hereby adopted this ordinance number 1176, which is an ordinance to amend the provisions of the ordinance as codified at section 55.09B3 by increasing the spring cleanup fee from five dollars for each residential customer billing to six dollars for each residential customer billing, beginning in 2021 and continuing each that each year thereafter. The aforementioned ordinance shall be in full force and effect as of the date of the passage of this ordinance after its passage by the common council of the City of Tell City and approval by the mayor and publication in accordance with law. Passed and adopted by the common council of the City of Tell City, Indiana this third day of May 2021.
Okay, what do we need, a motion for title only?
Uh.
Need that?
For a second reading by title, suspend the rules for second reading by title.
Okay, all?
Second and third reading, yes.
Does that need to be a motion or just a vote?
It would be a motion, it would be a motion.
Motion?
I'll second that.
Did John meet the motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay?
For the sake of brevity, I'm going to call this an ordinance amending previously adopted ordinance number 1123 passed on 6/5/2017. Third reading, ordinance number 1176, further amending ordinance number 1123 passed on 6/5/2017.
Okay, do we have a motion to prove that?
So moved.
So move, second? And a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
Okay, four?
Four to one.
Four to one.
And who, I'm sorry, who was the one that opposed?
Larry.
Larry?
Trouble mic'er.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm surprised there weren't any typos in that.
If there were, I rattled through. Okay Phillip, just because you said that, I noticed that the word spring wasn't capitalized in here, so I'm gonna fix that.
Trying to help him out a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
There's always one in the crowd.
Okay, I think that ends old business.
I will get that updated email to you in the morning.
And heading into new business under A, we have an ordinance creating ARPA fund and plan. And Jeff's gonna drive the bus here. And I think uh, whatever we approve at this point, it can be amended, is that correct?
Yes.
Changed, okay. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Did you want me to explain a little bit on this?
Yes Connie, certainly, go right ahead.
Thank you.
This is recommended by the state that we have, we adopt this ordinance. And what this is doing is uh, creating a local grant fund within the clerk's office to be called the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So we are establishing that as fund number 176. And this goes through with different specifications, different things that this money can be used for. And then you also, they are requiring that we do have a plan that establishes also what we intend to do with our funding. Now, this plan can be amended at any time. So right now, we have taken the guideline that this, that has been provided to us by the government as to this funding. We are still waiting for more specific information from the state board of accounts and the US Treasury as to how we can spend this funding. But we hope to get our fun, half of our funding here sometime in May. So we needed to have this on file. And then once it gets, we get more details, then we will be able to uh, decide how the money will be spent. And Chris is, uh, did have on the agenda tonight, but we did remove it. He is working to have a committee to help with all of this, once we get to that point. And he was going to announce that this evening, but we will have that at another meeting then. Does anybody have any questions?
This this is creating a landing spot for those funds.
Right, that's basically what it is. It's a creating this fund for us to be able to put this money in, yes. And then all funds, anything we spend will come out of that fund.
Which of you are you reading that?
Somebody makes a motion and second and.
Okay.
So is, is the mayor gonna create a committee, it sounds like?
Yeah, there's gonna be a committee created uh, to to discuss the uh, the use of the funds.
Once we find out for sure what we can use them for.
Yeah, yeah, there's, we're still gonna receive some guidance from the federal government, uh, likely from the state as well in regard to what these funds can be used for. So as I said, this is gonna create a a place for the money to land. It's kind of like opening a bank account before you actually receive your funds.
And that's still largely at the discretion of the mayor, right?
The, what the funds can be used for, uh, we really don't know.
I don't know yet. My understanding is the plan has to be approved by the council.
Yes.
Ultimately, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
It'd have to be, it'd have to go through the normal appropriation process.
We'll have to go through the council, yes.
Yeah, cool.
Yes, yes.
That's the way I understand it. If we receive some type of advice to the contrary, then I am almost certain it's gonna go before the council in any event.
Yes, yes.
Just knowing how the mayor operates.
If it's an order, I would make a motion for the first reading of ordinance number.
1175.
1175.
Do we have a second?
I did.
Julie, second. All those in favor of this first reading? Signify, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
It was close.
Ordinance number 1175. An ordinance creating a new fund for the receipt of monies from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Whereas the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, on March 10th, 2021. And whereas the ARPA was subsequently signed into law by the president on March 11th, 2021. And whereas the state board of accounts issued a directive on March 18th, 2021, which requires counties, cities, and towns that will receive an allocation of monies from the ARPA's Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to establish by ordinance, a separate local grant fund called the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, here and after the fund. Now therefore be it resolved and ordained by the common council of Tell City, Indiana that, number one, there is created a new local grant fund within the clerk treasurer's office that shall be titled ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And that the clerk treasurer has issued a fund number of 176 with respect to these monies, and that such money shall be non-reverting. Number two, the uses of the fund are specified in section 603C of the ARPA and shall be used in accordance with US Treasury guidance as amended to respond to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease 2019 or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or to aid the impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. To respond to workers performing essential work during a COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible works of the metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of government or county that are performing such essential work or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. For the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of local government or county due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of local government or county prior to the emergency. Or to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure as approved by the US Treasury. A metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of local government or county receiving a payment from the funds made available under this section may transfer funds to a private nonprofit organization as that term is defined in paragraph section 17 of section 401 of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, 42USC 11360, section 17. A public benefit corporation involved in the transportation of passengers or cargo or a special purpose unit of state or local government. Number three, the monies of the fund shall be appropriated by the common council, the council, before expenditure and all expenditures shall be approved by the council with any and all claims to be paid from the fund. The council will encourage public input in order to create the plan, conditions, and rules, together, the plan, upon which the monies are to be requested and used. The plan is attached here to as exhibit A and may be amended. The clerk treasurer shall keep accurate and complete financial records of the receipt and expenditure of any and all monies deposited into and paid from the fund. Any unused monies of the fund shall be paid back to the US Treasury as required. Monies of the fund shall not be deposited into any pension fund. Duly adopted by the common council of Tell City, Indiana this third day of May 2021. Um, there is also exhibit A, a plan for the utilization of monies from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. According to the state board of accounts, Tell City, Indiana will receive approximately 1,000, 1,500,000 dollars from the ARPA's Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. As a non-entit- As a non-entitlement unit of local government, the city will receive its allocation of monies from the state of Indiana, the state, in two tranches. The first tranche is expected to be allocated by the state within thirty days of May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The second tranche is expected to be allocated by the state no sooner than twelve months after the first tranche. The Common Council of the Ci- of Tel City, Indiana, the council, will utilize its allocation of monies in accordance with section six oh three C of the ARPA and shall be used in accordance with U.S. Treasury guidance as amended. Accordingly, accordingly, the council will consider the following actions. Number one, responding to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease twenty nineteen or its negative economic impacts by providing assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or to aid the impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Number two, responding to workers performing essential work during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. Number three, recovering lost government resident, revenue due to the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. And number four, making necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure as approved by the U.S. Treasury. Transferring funds to a private nonprofit organization, comma, comma. A public benefit corporation involved in the transportation of passengers or cargo, or a special purpose unit of state or local government, sorry. The council understands that the U.S. Treasury will likely amend its guidance for the use of these monies, and therefore, this plan may be amended as deemed necessary. Furthermore, void amendment by the U.S. Treasury, the council understands that all monies must be spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and therefore will engage in long-term planning efforts. Didn't catch any typos, but I tried to create one.
Connie, I got a question here. In, in two places it uses the term premium pay. Do we have a, a category here at the city titled premium pay, or what?
Not at this point, no.
Who would define what the premium pay? Would that be the highest amount we pay to any employee?
When we sat through that, when we went through that webinar the other day, they mentioned something about thirteen dollars an hour. I don't know if that would have been on top of what those people were making, they would make an additional thirteen dollars an hour. I think we would need some more clarification on that, and we have not received that yet.
As, as I understand it, that, that's a maximum of thirteen dollars.
That we could go up to, yes, and no more than that.
Yeah, up to thirteen, and, and my understanding is that premium means because they were an essential worker, they had to do work that exposed them, potentially exposed them to additional risk or hazards, um, that they may be entitled to that premium pay for performing those duties under those circumstances.
And the, and the way I read it, it would, it would potentially be, the, the city would be able to pay the city's employees or provide grants to employers with essential workers, so that.
And I think there's, there's also an annual cap on, if I recall, it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah.
Per.
There's gonna be a lot of guidance that's gonna have to come, because I can tell you from my perspective just in reading this today and reviewing it prior to the meeting, there's a lot of broad language here that's gonna require some guidance, and we're gonna get that.
Yeah, and I, I, that one's gonna be a difficult one because you can't go back. I mean, this is, as I understand it, this is going forward from.
Going forward is what I understand also.
Whatever the March tenth, or whatever.
From March eighteenth, I think, when they gave us the directive, so.
The future committee's gonna have its hands full figuring out how to deal with this.
If it's an order, I would make a motion to have second, third readings by title only.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Julie? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, yeah?
Ordinance number eleven seventy-five, an ordinance creating a new fund for the receipt of monies from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Third reading, ordinance number eleven seventy-five, an ordinance creating a new fund for the receipt of monies from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, do we have a motion at this point to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
I'm certain that issue's gonna come back in front of this council.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
It's a good, it's a good issue to have.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Anything's heaven.
Under C, we have potential real estate, uh, contribution that came before the board of works this evening. And Jeff's going to.
Yeah.
Talk about this a little, Connie, or?
Some of, some of you are here, um, but just as an update, German American Bank, um, is, uh, uh, gonna do some major investment in their branch locations. As, as a result of that, they will be closing their main branch location on Main Street. Um, I would note that they are not cutting back on any jobs, nobody's losing their job. They're gonna make substantial investment on these other properties that they already own. Um, and they would like to donate their building and the real estate that it sits on to the city of Tel City. Um, I advise the Board of Public Works by statute, it's, the city of Tel City can accept donations from the state, from the federal government, or any entity. There's a statute that specifically says that. So, uh, the recommendation of the Board of Public Works was simply that, that, uh, they provided a recommendation to the council that the council accept this donation in the event that German American intends to follow through on it. I believe they are going to, uh, issue a, uh, press release tomorrow, German American is. Uh, I've spoken with the mayor, um, he's enthusiastic about this, uh, he's very thankful to German American. Um, I believe the building, uh, obvi- obviously, the building's in good shape, that it's, that they've been using it for some time. Um, there are a lot of potential for uses that the city could have. The mayor, um, has not discussed anything specific yet, but I'm sure he would intend to come before the council in the future about potential uses of that building. Um, but that's what this, uh, uh, agenda item's all about. Um, I think it is, uh, from our perspective, uh, between ARPA funds coming our way and now German American wants to give us a perfectly viable building on Main Street. So, um, that's what this issue's all about.
Questions, comments?
I, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Uh, one is, I too echo the appreciation of German American Bank for, um, their investment in our community. And although they're closing the downtown bank, they're making, as I understand it, significant investments in both the south side and north side branches. And I, I appreciate that investment in our community. I have, I have just a couple of concerns. One is, obviously, it will increase our operational costs. I mean, another building is, uh, requires additional operational costs. So there is that concern. There's also a concern of loss of tax revenue, uh, by that going to the city via V versus a private entity. But, but I think, all in all, I think the city should proceed with accepting the gift. One question I have for our attorney is if we accept that gift and two, three, four, or five years from now, um, decide we can't afford that building, what kind of restrictions will be on us as far as getting rid of the building?
Exactly the same restrictions we'd have on getting rid of any other property that we own. Um, there's statutory process.
So German American's not gonna put any stipulations in the gift?
I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of any, any type of restrictions that they intend to, to place on that. Um, you know, much like, uh, the, the properties that we've recently, uh, sold down here, there's a statutory process for offering properties for bid. Um, we could seek a developer and try to work in partnership. There are statutory provisions for transferring, uh, properties to not-for-profit entities. So we, we would just have to follow the statutory provisions for doing that. But we, we would be able to dispose of it, there's no doubt of that.
Okay, so, uh, as long as there's no.
As long as there's no covenants or restrictions placed on it, and I think that, uh, that would change the discussion a little bit, but I'm not aware of anything like that that German American intends to do.
Okay.
I think the mayor feels like there's some potential individuals within our area downtown who could rent part of that and use, utilize it for their services. So we might get some additional income coming in.
I, I understand.
Yeah, it could produce.
I understand that, I'm just trying to be conservative in our approach.
Well, and as to the, the tax issue, I, I, I'm far from a specialist in this area, but I've gotta assume that the improvements that they intend to make on their other facilities is likely to increase the assessed value of those, so.
Yeah.
That would, that would probably minimize the, the tax hit that comes from that, too.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, do we need a motion?
I think as much as anything, uh, you could make a motion, uh, maybe have a vote on a show of support. Um, I don't think that it's, the city can absolutely accept a donation, as I said. So I don't think that there's any affirmative action that we have to take to do that. Um, but I think, and, the, the main thing is bring it in front of you and give you the opportunity to voice your support for it. And if somebody wants to make a motion and, and, and take a vote on that, it doesn't harm anything by any.
I'll certainly make a motion to the effect that, uh, the city accepts this potential contribution from German American Bank.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, D is off the agenda, the D, we have one thing left here. Uh, Connie and Janice may talk a little bit about it, comprehensive plan update.
Yes, we just wanted to let the council members know that the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee did meet, uh, last week. And we met with our company that is going to be developing the, uh, comprehensive plan for the city of Tel City. And one of the first things that's going to happen, and we hope to have everyone on the council involved in this, and to bring all your, your friends or anyone that wants to comment or anything, on May the eighteenth, from five in the evening till seven in the evening at the Shergin Center, is going to be what's called a vision workshop that you can come to and you can express your interest in what you would like to see Tel City do in any kind of development and, and that. Janice, did you have anything else?
No, we had the first meeting. I did wanna comment, you don't have to be in attendance from one to five to seven. It's not a two-hour meeting, it's a two-hour window off suite. You can kind of go at any time, it's not two hours. So you don't have to be there for two hours, you should show up sometime and they'll be people to talk to and I think you're gonna kind of serve as people.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I missed right the end of the meeting the other day.
You giving door prizes to them?
I can ask them to bring people around.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a slot, right?
It was. I knew you were gonna ask. Did you tail?
It's CSW Design, the Taylor, Seaver, Williams Design Group, and they're from Louisville. The three consultants that were here for our meeting all work in Southern Indiana. John, Jeff, Chris, Bill, and, um, Scott. And they have done numerous plans in Southern Indiana, they've been very highly recommended. They did have to go through a process to be scored and selected, but we've become a great organization.
Uh, this is part of the fifty thousand, not quite fifty thousand dollar planning grant that we got from.
Correct, the forty-nine thousand five hundred grant that we got from Oak Ridge, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes. So hopefully, you know, hopefully, I did give everyone a flyer. If you need more, let me know, uh, but, you know, if you can attend and, and voice your opinions on, on idea, new ideas for Tel City, or what we can do with existing things that are, are here in town, that, so. But that is our first meeting, and then I think there's another meeting then of the Steering Committee Plan for in June. So. But everyone, it was, like Janice said, it was a very good meeting that we had the other day, so.
Okay, uh.
That's all I had on that.
All right, good. Next, mayor's report, uh, there is no mayor's report this evening. Uh, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for being here.